I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the committee of the board meeting on July 17, 2018. Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Tal? Yes. Trustee Dupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Yes. Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of the board, October 23, 2018. I'll accept the motion. Give a second.
One second.
Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Dupan. Any questions? Got a question?
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Tal?
Stay.
Trustee Dupan?
I'm staying.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Ray?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I allow five public comments. All comments and questions will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter to take into the business of our village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate or counter discussion. I will answer all comments at the end of the comment session. You can step right up and give your name.
Linda Washington, I'm here to talk about the firing of Chief Kowalski on Friday. The residents, if you understand that our chief out there was fired on Friday, let go. Nobody knew what was going on over the weekend, what was the protocol? Who was in charge of the safety of the village, the residents, they're all very unsafe, not knowing what was going on. We called the trustees, some of the trustees that are eligible to be reached, they had no idea what was going on. Being a former trustee here in Saw Village myself, it is appalling that the mayor and his advisors would remove a police chief on a weekend, knowing all of the things that go on in this village, all of the hotspots that we have in this village. Remove the chief on Friday, now you have nobody in control that the residents could feel safe to know about what's going on. We know we have a protocol, we don't put this in place, but just to remove the chief, a holiday was Monday and then tonight to be prepared to put somebody else in place. I sat right there next to you for four years when he was a trustee of Bear Village. A former Bear Village towers, or David Hanks would have done anything remotely like this, you would have been raising all kind of hell. First of all, the salary, we still have to pay Chief Kowalski, I understand, for four more months of his contract. Where are we getting all of this money from? Those are your famous words to everybody. Your famous words always was Mayor Hanks, Mayor Towers. With all due respect, if we grow a money tree in Saw Village, where are we getting all this money from, all of a sudden? Now you've been there, we get money from everywhere. Joe Wizwazi is still on social media talking about everybody, drawing pictures about everybody, putting everybody down along with other people that's on social media. So the prayer that the ministers in this village came together and had for it to stop, and the racial tension to stop, you got to constantly stir the pot and keep it a going. It makes absolutely no sense that there is no communication from the mayor's office to the trustees that were elected by the people. These trustees are not just sitting up here because they want to be up here. We elected them to sit up there to watch the village and watch the money. Where is the money going? You all need to do your job, people elected to this, and let the residents know what's going on.
Judy Cass here. First of all, this all has been brought up with the last two administrations and now this one. And in no way am I judging the integrity or the professionalism of the person you intend to swear in. But my questions go to you. You decided that a FOIA, when I give a FOIA request, I usually get a copy of it that has been stamped, so that if I need to, I can tell the state's attorney, it went in on this date and this time. You decided to stop that. And your logic in that was because it was going to save money. One lousy piece of paper is going to save money. You spent $400 on a chair for yourself. Our police department has garbage furniture that should never be in that station. It should be thrown out in the garbage now and let them sit on some apple boxes or something. Because we don't have the money. You haven't replaced two officers that left, even though it's still in the budget, you're still not replacing them because, again, you're saving money. You hired an HR person that's milking us dry with her HR pay as well as her pay for the police contract, which is going close to a year now, and nothing's been done. Why hasn't it been solved? Why are we spending all that money? The accounts payable today has her on here for the, her pay plus pay for the contract negotiations. We don't have enough money, and yet you're going to bring in a brand-new police chief. And even though it would be spectacular to have something like that, we have three people within our own department that are capable of being a chief. It would save us money to have them from within. But you, Derek, refuse to swallow your pride and your personal feelings and do what you promised to do in your campaign. We do have the people, and when we finally get our feet on the ground, then you could get somebody to your liking. But in the meantime, we don't have the money. And I agree with Linda Washington, you did this very quick, without the approval of the board. I was at the last board meetings way back. None of this came up to the board, wasn't approved. Your people that you hired, HR, the treasurer, Joe Wizwazi, none of them were approved. Where are we getting all the money from? And if there is a tree, can I have sap? Uh-huh, for you.
My thing is about my water bill. You gotta turn my water off. My bill was $185. My bill was $185. Now, all of a sudden, I haven't had your water. I've been working on since last October. Every time I come to try to pay this, you shouldn't get another water bill. Now my bill is $970, so I haven't even used it. There's this young lady over there, she promised me she was gonna make adjustments to it, and she sent me a voicemail on my phone telling me she changed her math, she's not gonna do it. I got my phone on my phone.
That's a liar. Honey Doo is lying.
Whatever's going on between you and Mr. Burton, it's something personal, bro. Ain't nothing business. I've been knowing you for a while, and you know that. So you guys need to try to get my water back, bro. I'm not gonna give y'all no $970 for no water I didn't use. I got a problem with $285. That's what the $100 connection paid. You need to keep your word. Vote in your angle, vote your body. Not right, man. That's all I had to say. Gotta get this together. Been too long.
Nathan Burton, I have several questions I would like to ask you, mayor. Can you, as the mayor, in the new administration, change the rule that has been enforced for years? I might have enough of this person.
He ain't gonna answer, you keep going.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you the question. I just wanna know, can you change things? You and the new administration, things that's been forced for years and years and years, can you, as the new mayor and the administration, which is the trustee and person, can you change things? If your water, this is, I'm talking concerning water. I'm not having a problem, but it's other people in the village that have a problem. If your water gets shut off, why should you receive a bill? If the water is completely shut off, why should you get a bill?
For the water.
Why? Water, sewage, garbage, you can consider one bill. But if the water in the sewer is cut off, can't you just charge us, garbage picked up only? Take any consideration, Richard, the thing. Until some kind of rage has been made with the persons, or persons that had their water cut off. You may just pay the garbage bill only because their garbage is being picked up. But I still, that's a mystery to me. It really is a mystery. That's something to really think about. When your water is cut off. Click, click, click. Why should you get a bill? Thank you, mayor. Are you gonna answer this, or you gonna answer? You want me to stand here and you give me an answer?
As I stated before, sir, in this every meeting, I will answer a question at the conclusion of all questions.
So stupid. Who knows that?
Kathy Gutcher. First, I wanna know, what is the price?
Talking to Mike.
First, I wanna know what the price is of that, as the program that you're gonna vote on today. Is it replacing with something we already have, and is there a difference in that price? Second, has the water, uh, I'm sorry. Has the fire department received the funds to replace and retain the mandatory safety equipment that is needed to keep them safe while they come out and respond to, keep safe lives and property? Next, and I know what the answer is gonna be to this question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Why was the police chief fired? You fired Sherry, she did her job, she was qualified. You fired Mohan, he did his job, he was qualified. He was honest. And now, when our village is overabundant with trying, we have shots fired in every area of this village, except for Navy, here. And you have the audacity to fire the man that will come out and help this, this policeman. And he is qualified. He is, he was not just a chief, he came out and, and was part of the village, and you fired him. I have no disrespect to the man that you're about to put in. I don't know him, I don't know if he's qualified. I hope he's qualified. Because your track record with replacing the people that you fired is by far bad.
Heidi Parker, I have a problem with you answering the questions after everyone has spoken. You do not answer all the questions, and you also turn things around because I think the audience may not remember what was asked. At this meeting, when it was about operational transfers, and you started talking about transferring money from one account to another one, that's really the definition of operational transfers. Please go back to answering the questions after each person has made their statements. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and board. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having the presentation on the website. Considering the financials have not been updated on the website for over a year, I'm glad to see that there is some movement being done on that. However, I understand that the department heads or maybe the trustees are gonna be able to do their own portion of the website. I would just like to recommend a website committee. I would like to recommend that you take input from the community. I would also like to volunteer for a website committee. Considering I was on the website committee before, I would actually like to be a part of that decision. Second of all, I'm not here to disrespect anybody, I'm here to respect what's possible. I don't know the person who's being appointed tonight, and I'm sure he's extremely qualified. Being the expert, I have certain things at my disposal. And I would like to read from December 13, 2011 minutes. Miscellaneous business comments from the trustees. Trustee Burton stated that Mayor Towers, I'm sorry, not me, I didn't say his name, is intentionally trying to circumvent the village board's legal authority to represent the advice and consent as stipulated in the Illinois compiled statutes. While the mayor has the legal right to appoint, the power is checked by the village board and trustees with the requirement of the village board's advice and consent. That's from the actual minutes, December 13, 2011. I also went back at a few emails because being a village clerk for eight years in a very hostile environment for eight years, history is repeating itself, not once, not twice, three times, maybe more. I mean, this isn't the first time you've been in this situation. It's unfortunate, because it doesn't just affect the people that are being brought before the village, it affects the residents, and it affects the board members, it affects the department heads. I'm not gonna read this whole email, but it is available to those who want it, because a lot of it doesn't pertain, I don't know, it's kind of rushed. I want to, first of all, thank you for speaking with me today. As you may know, I'm a former trustee of Saw Village and governed at this time with law and order, the failed, as well as the man's wordlessness bottom. I wanted to share a sincere message with you and hope that you take it to heart or at least in consideration. I believe you to be an outstanding person. You got caught up in a quagmire of political games for which you have no control over and will not give the rules. As you may have noticed, the mayor is held by not doing what he wants without the advice and consent of his village board trustees. He has taken upon himself, he should have taken upon himself, to read the village's articles of incorporation, as well as the village municipal code for taking notice. He would have been aware of some significant details. He's losing the respect of his board. They oppose him not because it's politically expedient, but to do so, rather than he fails to engage with the basic common sense when he proposes direct to his board trustees. And again, this is not my words, this is actually an email. Saw Village is not as strong, it's not a mayor form of government, as the mayor has, can I have another minute? How long was that? Respect, thank you, sir. As a mayor, so erroneously believes, but a mayor trustee form of government. Simply put, sir, you're an intelligent man, and I believe that under different circumstances, you would have been a logical choice for a police chief. However, the mayor has brought you a better opportunity when he failed to post a job to other candidates and follow the democratic process of choosing, the best from the line. Thank you for giving me more time. The lack of transparency is causing hurt feelings amongst the residents and amongst the board. We have qualified people in the department that could have been chosen. We have for years been the poster child for bad behavior for boards. And will we ever get a community that works in place together? I want that community back. I've been a resident for over 30 years. I want that community back. I wanna be a part of a community that works together. And no, I did not mean the person who wrote this email, but I have a copy of it. Thank you.
Rachel Leesman, although I might not be able to call you. I do hope that you treat spring leisure. I said Rachel Leesman. I hope that the police chief does do her job, the one you're putting in. But I am still concerned about the lack of patrolmen that we have. We are still needing at least two more officers. So even though we are getting a police chief, that is awesome, I'm wondering if and when we will be getting the two, at least two more officers because of the amount of overtime these people are like doing, which is good, they like doing it, I guess. But it is kind of dangerous when they're up for god knows how many hours and doing not even the eight hours in between your shift. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I think it would be better if we had at least two, two different officers or at least an officer on each shift, which is three shifts, so maybe two or three officers more. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, mayor. Mary Escalera, I'm here to talk about the social media. As you know, I said I'd be here every week. Joe Wizwazi should have been fired. You know there's an ordinance, the ordinance was given to you and to all your trustees. And again, following trustees who keep agreeing with the mayor and not doing anything about it. Remember, you were bought in, people voted you in and they will vote you out. And for those that were not voted in, I'm sure you won't give up in it. But I just wanna say that every time I get a compliment, I pull out the little article that Joe Wizwazi and company wrote about me, along with my picture. And I'm asked, why is he so insecure? And what threat am I to him? And I say, I have a high school diploma. He does. That's all I have to say. But you do need to control your people, your employees, even though you say you can't control them. If you can't control them, you're not a leader. That's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Pad couch. Again, for about the ninth week, I think, in a row, if I'm not mistaken, I've lost count. I'm still waiting to get a report on how many fire hydrants are down, how many have been repaired. We seem to not get any of that information. So someday, maybe we'll find that, because it does affect the residents, it affects their insurance. If they go out and have a fire, and they go have a working fire hydrant, somebody's gonna pay. Another issue regarding our fire department, I'm a little upset that I hear numerous times a week when our firemen are called out on a call to back up the ambulance service, which we pay a dead-gum-good dollar to that ambulance service, but they send an ambulance out for whatever, but then they get there and then they have to call. We need backup, we need extra help, we need lift assist. How much money is they, the ambulance service, going to reimburse the village or our fire department for all these calls that they send two young girls out on that ambulance? They can't lift the patient or whatever, they have to call out our fire department, who is getting paid on call, to help them. Somebody needs to look at all that money that is going to the ambulance service. Then we go out to back them up, and we're not getting a penny back, are we? Curious.
Hi, my name is Carrie Jones. I wanted to see if we can get some help over there on Carol. I know we need help everywhere in the village, but they're breaking in all these homes, stealing verses. I see them doing it, you know, in the black, pulling up with these trucks and, you know, there's garbage, they're selling trucks down the black. Something had to be done about it. And all these shootings, something after another over there. I was gonna go down there and start raiding up all the garbage, but, you know, I thought I said, well, let this lay off edge, I don't care. I just want to think, you know, help out, or somebody help out. I'm willing to volunteer to do it, but, you know, nobody wants to help out, so. All right, thank you.
Let me try to go back over this. First of all, the fire chief was not fired on Friday. I'm sorry, police chief was not fired on Friday. I don't know where that rumor came out, and that's why I try my best to keep things, because things get out and they get misrepresented, because he was let go today by me. And then it was asked, why did I? Because I felt I needed to go in a different direction. As far as the FOIAs, I never told anybody, I don't know where that came from, to stop stamping the FOIAs. I don't even know where that came from, but I'll check into that, because I'm not there to, when the FOIAs come in. So how would I even say, don't stamp them? They need to be stamped when they came in, because it doesn't happen, they don't, we have, they're actually, they're heavy. So we have to find out when they came in to make sure we respond to them. As far as your person's water bill, I'll check into that, because I wasn't aware that someone promised another person that they would, you know, I know that, and let me set the record straight. I've known you through someone else, the person I'm talking about, and I know a lot of times someone wants to claim family, but there is no way that, there's no, I'm not any part of the family of this particular person. But I will check into the, to see if there was a promise given. I don't know if it was given, but I'll have to find out if there's a recording, I have to listen to that. But I do know that the individual was coming to pay the water bill. It was given a price last year, they didn't pay it on early part of this year, and didn't pay it. So when you don't pay it quite naturally, your water bill can be moved on. As far as the, if your water shut off, if you shut your water off, and you ask to have that service discontinued, your water bill should stop. If we shut you off, you could still continue to get a water bill because you're not paying. You have to actually ask to have that shut out, so you want to come in and talk about that.
Wait, what?
If you I'm gonna try to finish this, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna keep going back and forth. If you ask to have your water shut off, your water will be shut off at that time. If we shut off because of not paying, you will still acquire a bill. We just shut your water off, but you're still gonna pay a minimum each hour month if you come in and make restitution. So yes, you have to come in. As far as your garbage, there's no way that you can just have garbage and not the water bill is equated with the sewer and garbage. All that is in one, there's no such thing as garbage only. You would, you know, so if we're not picking up just garbage and your water shut off, if someone's picking up the garbage and your water shut off, that's a mistake of ours. And I'm glad someone said something, because that's a mistake of on our part of the village, because we equate all of them at the same. As far as the person asking about the SOX program, I think I have a copy of the contract. Okay, $2,400 a year for that particular service of SOX. And also, someone, same person asked about the, do we see, receive funds to get equipment? We receive funds all the time, we have to wait to accumulate enough. Right now, we're trying to wait, we're trying to see if we're gonna get a grant to replace so many equipment for the fire department. And so right now, we're waiting on that, and if it's not, then we have to go and, and the funds that we're given, and there's not a lot. a lot that we give through different billing that we get from the state to purchase this equipment. And as far as fired personnel, a couple of people that never let go was due to consolidation. And yes, I did fire Mr. Mohan and Chief Kowalski, and that was something that I felt that was needed because I needed to, if I keep doing the same thing over and over and expect a different result, then I'm crazy. As far as Paul answering, at the end, I'm trying to answer all the questions, the website. I will put you down for that person that wants to be part of the website committee. I have your number, so we'll be in contact with that when that committee is formed. As far as lack of police officers on the, on the, on patrol, I've known that for a while. We're going to try to address that. That's why I need to go in a different direction, it's not because we don't have enough police officers, we need to utilize them more in a different direction. I don't answer social media questions. The fire hydrants, I thought that that was given to you. I will make sure you get a copy of the fire hydrants that are in repair and the fire hydrants that are not working. And as far as ambulance service calling out, I've already talked to Bud's Ambulance about that, why do they need, if they have people that's there to assist someone or to come out on a call, why should they have to wait and call our police, our fire department to help do that? So that's something that's been addressed and talked about before. If you're out on the call, you should make sure that whoever's on the ambulance has proper personnel to take care of the job. And as far as the Carroll Avenue and the shooting, we're going to, we're going to readdress those more aggressively. We cannot stop shootings, I've said before. Police, you have a bunch of policemen every day. Not one of them can stop a shot unless they want to jump in front of a building. But they cannot stop a person that wants to shoot another person. They can deter it, they can, hopefully their presence will, will deter a person from doing it. But if a person wants to shoot someone, you can have a thousand police officers on the street, as soon as they go or whatever, if it must happen, it's going to happen. So the only thing we can do is show a better presence and hopefully we can get more interaction with the committee. And that's the way that you have to do that. That being said, we'll move on to the reports. The mayor's report. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve our new chief, Malcolm. I need the motion from the board. Move back trustee Carter, second by trustee Zuhad, leave your call.
I have a comment. And deputy wife, this is nothing personal. Because reading your resume, you're very qualified. The issue that I have, I want you to know, is I listened to the residents. This board was not aware, we're told at the last minute. But I want you to understand when I click my vote, this is not personal.
Young question. What have you heard?
Just to add. Justy Zuhad, yes. Justy Brewer.
Justy.
Justy Carter.
Yes.
Justy Grant.
Yes.
Justy Tate.
Motion is carried. Madam clerk, please swear an honest police chief. Ms. White, please come up.
And repeat after me. I, Marcus White, that changed, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the constitution of the state of Villanova, the laws and ordinances of the village of Sawthill Village, and that I, real as the chief of police of the police department of Sawthill Village, I will protect to the best of my ability the lives and property of the citizens of our village, and that I will faithfully assume and discharge the duties of the state office according to the law and ordinances while serving with loyalty and pride in our Sawthill Village Police Department according to the best of my ability.
I can't help but ask a question to you live police officers, I guess you came from support. Thank you.
Now, of all the officers, it's a duty to come up, please, right now. If you're an officer, please come.
Dale.
And the rest of you, if you're trying to come up here for me. Mr. Lee, I have no choice, please.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, thank you. Talk to us, you know. Definitely. All right, chief, thank you. Okay, next item, Mr. Mayor report. The resolution that I was going to read for the school district serving the students and the residents of Sawthill Village, the following districts, we have four. Stager School District, District 168, is located in both Southern County and Northern County, Stager. No, you can't go over there, cannot go over there. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
As I said, Stager School District 194, and it currently serves 700 students throughout Stager, South Chicago Heights, Park IV, Sawthill Village and Creek. And this serves students residing in the Deer Creek subdivision. School District 172 is the elementary school district based in the incorporated Southern Chicago suburb, Chicago Heights, Illinois, and serves Chicago Heights and surrounding communities of Lynnwood and Sawthill Village. District 172 serves students residing in Motherstone. District 168 is arranged in grade level attended centers and pre-kedificals through eighth grade to second graders attending Wagner, third through fifth graders attending Strasburg, and sixth through eighth graders attending Rickle. And then the last school district is Bloom Trail High School, District 206, which serves Stager, Sawthill Village, Creek, South Chicago Heights, Fort Heights, small portion of Chicago Heights, and parts of Lynnwood. And the following schools, Athenee to Bloom Trail, out of Columbia, which is located in Stager, Rickleburn, which is located in Sawthill Village, Creek, Monique, and located in Creek, and College, College Grove Middle School, which is located in Fort Heights. The resolution is as follows. Whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for the adverse communities and in the capacity they are charged with meeting the community's expectation and aspiration for the public education for their children, and whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship, guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust, and whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for education of all students and provides the effective and efficient operation of their district. Whereas school board members are not policy to give voice so that leadership can employ a superintendent to administer board policy and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy, and whereas school board members selfishly volunteer countless hours of public service with no compensation. And as whereas employers are supportive of their employees and serve as school board members, generally leading support, lending support in time. Employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school district and community they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to their employer. And whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them as the front line of American democracy, and now therefore being resolved by the village of Sawthill Village that we proclaim November 15th, 2018, as School Board Members Day, as a way to honor these citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children. This is the opportunity for students, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, guardians and the community to thank the school board with commitment to providing a local government's voice on education issues. Dated the 13th of November, Mayor Derek Burgess. I will be presenting this to the school board and greeting it probably after the next board meeting, but I think it's... Also, I would like to, for the school board members that are here in the village, I'm sorry, I'm going to tell them right now, could you please stand? Tammy, Tammy Jones and Sinead Garrett and Sharon. I, yeah, that's Sharon. I didn't see it. Can you get, can you see these people, please, around the block? Oh, she didn't stand, but yes, and Margaret, Margaret Prue is also a school board member. I said I was school board member, please stand, I don't know. So I will be giving copies out to each one of the school districts that we represent, and they'll be getting the copies of that. Okay, next item. Village clerk's support, Madam clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to report that public clerks were out last week facing outbreaks, so it did not go back to confirm that each and everyone had been planted, but I know that they worked on it for two days in a row. I'd like to invite everyone out, for mayor and I'd like to invite everyone out, to Bloom Township's property tax appeal forum that's going to take place this coming Thursday. We participated in this last year, and for those of you who did, I'm not certain how much of relief you got. I got a little less than a thousand, but you know what? I appreciate that little less than a thousand after they reviewed my taxes. So if you have concerns with your taxes, I would suggest that you come out. This is the next step after you file the appeal. If you've not filed the appeal, they will assist you with getting that appeal filed, and then this is where it actually goes to make the final determination. So you really, really would want to come out here on Thursday at 6:30. I had mentioned before the partnership meeting between all of the entities, again, Sawthill Village School, we have a meeting on Monday, the 19th, I believe it is, at the school board administration office, and I would like to invite any of you who would want to come. Voice specifically though, I would ask our new police chief to be there, along with our emergency management crew, as well as I would like for trustee Carter to consider attending that meeting as well. After the partnership meeting on Tuesday, we will talk about the Christmas cheer, however, we will have a meeting for those who can on the next day, which is the 20th at 1:30. But trustees, please know that the mayor has specifically stated that he would like for you to have a larger role in Christmas cheer this year. So I am counting upon each and every one of you to play that role that is his expectation. Last thing that I would like to report on is there and I met with Jonathan from the census office Wednesday last week, and he basically laid out a timeline for us, and we know that early January, we will be getting started, and I am going to ask our previous village clerk, she's so experienced, to serve on that committee with us, so she can help us through this process, but I would like to invite anyone else, who's in specifically, no more than five to eight people on that, and I promise you, you will not have to pick out your all board group. You will be our ambassador, just really reaching out to particular areas of people to help them to embrace what we want. Because we know that based on the number of people that we can account for in our census, that determines the type of resources and monies. They have targeted specific age groups this time, we're looking at the babies, so, for President Tammy, I would want you to be on that committee too, because we need to get blossoms involved and any and everyone that's to target population, we're going to go after that because Sawthill Village needs money. any and everyone that's to target population, we're going to go after that because Saw Village needs money. Saw Village needs resources. Saw Village people need to have faith in a process so that they can be counted and we can benefit from it. And Mr. Mayor, that's a big time.
Thank you, um, I just had some papers up, I had to get it buried up in some papers and I just wanted to kind of read this letter I just got today. Um, I didn't tell anyone about this. Uh, this is something that I just wanted to, um, bring up today. Um, I didn't even know this existed, but I found out this letter is from the government. The Government Finance Officers Association, which is in Chicago, is directed to the Honorable Mayor Derek Burgess. It says, "Dear Mayor Burgess, we are pleased to notify you that Village of Saw Village has received a distinguished budget presentation award for the current budget from Government Finance Officers, GF.OA. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgets and represents a significant achievement by your organization. When a distinguished budget presentation award is granted to an entity, a certificate of recognition for budget presentation is also presented to the individual or the target designated as being primarily responsible for having achieved the award. This award has been presented to Judith C. Sufon, the treasurer. We hope in just what she was, we hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation of the award and that the appropriate publicity will be given to this notable achievement, a press release is enclosed for your use." So when we give the actual award, I will be presenting this at the board meeting, I just wanted to let everyone know that I got this today. And I just had to, um, had to break it and let everybody know about it. I didn't even know if that's actually existed, but congratulations to Sufon. Okay, um, village engineer, Mr. Jim Zonnet.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we will be rebidding the West Elevated Tank riser replacement project this winter with the hope that we will get lower bid pricing with the greater availability of contractors who can complete this type of work. And secondly, the design of the I-394 water crossing is progressing well. We are looking to bid this project this winter also. That was very important, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Report to the private finance administration.
I'd like to know, um, how much are the West Elevated Tank's water pumps?
Use the mic, please.
About forty to fifty thousand dollars.
Forty to fifty? And do you have any information on the status of, um, the Island grant? We were supposed to get some money back from that grant, so do you have any information about when we're going to get it? And you also, Roxanne Engineer is saying that it's going to contribute because of the, I guess, I won't say mismanagement, but I know, just failed the cracks. Um, getting some of that money back and could we be use that money to contribute to the project? Say one?
I will check with the, uh, engineer responsible for billing and issuing everything.
Okay, so, uh, the eighty-five thousand is, is, um, back to, uh, is that I got, it went back to, or who did the eighty-five thousand go back to?
Well, I.D.R.
I.D.R., okay, it's gone. You said that saved us some money.
Any other questions? Okay, finance administration, interim director Judy Sufon.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Um, we have three bond payments due to Amalgamated Bank on December first. The money for the two thousand and seven A bond payment, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, was transferred to the bond trustee last week in an interest-bearing account at Amalgamated Bank. And I'm happy to report that this is the last payment the village owes on the two thousand and seven A bond. After this payment, the debt for the municipal center will officially be retired. Um, the money for the two thousand and seven B and C bonds will be transferred this week to the trustee again into an interest-bearing account at Amalgamated. So we are going to meet all of those obligations. In addition to that, we're now entering into a period where our revenue streams are slowing down. Um, with our, uh, revenue streams will again pick up again in March when we receive our property taxes. In the meantime, I will be communicating this to all department heads so that we can work together to, um, eliminate all non-essential spending, um, until March. This is a normal part of the municipal's annual financial life cycle and we will manage through this. This concludes my report.
I have a question. Uh, Miss Sufon, you indicated that this comes from, I'm sorry, you indicated that this will be, um, the funds, the six hundred and eighty-five is coming from Amalgamated, right?
Going to Amalgamated.
Okay, the eighty-seven thousand and the fifty-three thousand, it says from the First Midwest Bank.
That's the, the checking account that it comes from, that's our operating, you know, corporate account.
Mm-hmm.
So all of our payments essentially come from First Midwest.
But they amalgamated first?
No, they go, the bond payments go to Amalgamated Bank, Amalgamated Bank is our trustee, our bond trustee. And they receive all of our bond payments and they are, they sit in the middle between the, um, bondholders and the village. So their job is to sit in between both of us and to ensure that the bondholders get their payments. That's what trustees' role is.
Okay, now, uh, I have, uh, I sent you a couple of requests for reports, they were FOIA's. And I haven't been, haven't been able to get those, that information from you. I'd like to know, can you get me that information? This, I've been doing this since September twenty-first, I haven't got any, I did get one report from you. But I'd like to take a look at some of that stuff and I can't get, do anything until you've sent me some information, some data.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I think I communicated this to you earlier that my first, um, priority is to answer all FOIA's. There is a financial risk to the village if we do not respond to FOIA's on a timely basis. So that definitely, I'm sure everyone can agree that that is the first priority of any of us. So we will be responding to all FOIA's and I have that on my list, um, to give back to you as well.
Okay, also on the agent report, it's, uh, eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-four cents. That's been on the agent report for some time from Robin Schwartz?
Yes.
What is that?
Uh, Robin Schwartz is a legal firm. These legal bills date back to two thousand and fourteen. And I have been in communication with them, they continue to send us bills every month, that's why I put it on that report. But I'm in communication with them because I cannot, um, they have not been able to satisfy me as to what it is that they did for that money. And then I need to then go to a department head to get, you know, to get their, um, recollection that this, this work was indeed done.
If I'm not mistaken, this, this is way before your time, this has been a while.
Yes, it was. When I stepped in, I saw that invoice that was coming to the village every single month and reached out to them, so I started that dialogue with them.
Okay, and also we have another one for S and K security. Uh, two hundred thousand, this has been there a long time?
Well, that was something that we, um, again, that was in an envelope and that was stated that this was on hold. I'm in contact with them to try to understand what it is we owe them and what the service is. But because they say that it's an obligation of the village, I put it on the report.
Well, yeah, that seven thousand has been there a long time.
Must have been.
Uh, are we supposed to ask for, um, questions about the council?
We're not boiling on the council level.
I asked you, didn't we, are we supposed to ask questions?
Not, not, not until we get to that point, huh?
Yes, but you want me to ask them the question. Can you tell me what this Terry floral divide is for?
Uh, on what page is it?
It's on page, uh, one, it's a hundred and seven dollars.
I can ask Sebastian. That is for Roger Peckman, for our floor rating.
Okay. Also, um, when, when do we expect to see the bond payments? I know you said they could come from Amalgamated, but when are they going to show, are they going to show up on the council? The eighty-seven and the fifty-three, so how will we know it's been?
Uh, if we don't pay the bond payments, that's an event of default for any municipality. And, um, at that point in time, everyone would be advised of that. So I'm advising you that we are on time paying these, our, um, loan payments and our bond payments.
Okay, so is there any way we can get something to make sense there on time or something?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, fire department, um, Captain Dennis Sennaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Overhearing from October twenty-sixth through November eighth, fire department responded to thirty-eight calls for service. We have eight firearms, nine vehicle accidents, four ambulance assists, five runaway to our neighbors, five CO alarms, one lockout, one smoke scope, four smoke gaps and one brush fire. I will, Mr. Mayor, to trustees, the fire department participated in a veteran's favor remembrance at ABS truck and at the village hall. Both were well received. A grant has recently been permitted by the fire department to replace our SEVA models and fire roads. We are also included in the neighbors twenty-seven grant to replace all our two-way radios in order to become P-25 compliant. Let's hope both these grants are approved so we can pay for town roof remodel. On a sad note, uh, retired captain, our department's, the fire department, passed away this day morning. He was eighty-two years old. Please keep his family in your prayers. Uh, he served under the department from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen eighty-six for fifteen years. His wake will be held at Smith's, Almond and Dyer from two to eighth, and there'll be a funeral mass Thursday at ten thirty for centuries. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Um, police department, Chief Malcolm White, do you have any words that you want to say?
Uh, don't report it this time, I do look forward to, uh, to the next, uh, next, uh, report. And, uh, my support group that was here, just so everyone knows, uh, those are members of the South Village Chiefs Association as well as, uh, NOBLE, the National Organization of Black Enforcement Executives, as well as, um, the Illinois Chiefs Association. But I do appreciate, and I appreciate everyone, thank you.
We appreciate it. I never saw somebody offer to me one time, it's just my, I've never been to jail. Emergency, uh, management agency director, Alan Maverick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, of course. In a timeline from twenty-two October to twelve November, EMA responded to thirty-five, uh, uh, calls, ten firearms, one road, odor investigation, one rollover semi, four gas leaks, two vehicle accidents versus pedestrians, uh, seven auto accidents, three AOAs assist other agencies to stagger for auto accidents, one assist another agency to creek for a structure fire, one brush fire, two CO alarms and one smoke in a building. Also too, I'd like to remind everybody with the weather changing, please drive carefully, please bundle up. Also too, driving this Thanksgiving holiday, uh, being next week, give yourself, uh, uh, extra time to get to and from and arrive safely. And in conclusion, Mayor, of course, uh, myself, my deputy chief, Gary Del, would like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday Thanksgiving. This will conclude my report, thank you.
Okay. Um, public works, I'll read the, um, report from Kevin. Item number one, lease at two, two seventeen twenty-four Petersons. Seventeen thirty-one, twenty-twenty-third place, still outstanding. Yates upgrade was temporary backfill till we can return. Item number two, staff started and completed north side shut-off and turn-off list, total of a hundred and nineteen that were on that list. Uh, item number three, B-box dig and repair at seventeen thirty-one, two hundred and seventeen street and twenty, I'm sorry, two nineteen nineteen Clyde. Item number four, small job. Are being completed at the village hall, police department and fire department. Uh, plumbing lights, HVAC, filters and the club knock boxes that need to be on the command, community center and the keys are being made. Uh, grass cutting completed for the season, staff setting up for leaf rates and trucks. Storm branch pickup completed, next regular pickup will be made two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so that everyone knows, he was wanting to let everyone know that the branches that are out now, that, uh, he said those are not storm branch related. So if you cut bushes down, whatever, you're responsible for picking that debris up and getting, uh, getting, getting taken care of so you don't get a ticket. So all of the branches that they felt that were, um, done in the storm, they've been picked up. I, I have been around and saw people that have, uh, put their, um, clippings and pulled up some of their, um, foliage and put them on the sidewalk and on the, um, curb and they will not be picked up. So you be, you will be responsible for doing that, whoever's doing it. Uh, leaf pickup will begin on the thirteenth, start Ricky's house down, uh, as of the second of this month. And, uh, if there are other debris like branches or garbage in the pile, they will not be picked up. I'll reiterate, if there are other debris like branches or garbage in the pile, they will not be picked up and the homeowner will be responsible for removal or tickets will be issued. Uh, several concrete landscaping jobs were completed, two-two-four-three-four Yates, two-two-four-four-four Yates, two-two-one-four-nine Shirley. Ass far that each location will be completed before the plant closes on the nineteenth of November. Several asphalt repairs, landscaping were completed at two-two-two-one-nine Paxton in the driveway, eleven foot by eighteen foot and two-fifteen thirty-nine Merrill Avenue, twelve feet by thirty-four feet. Um, well, number three airstripper sump sensor was replaced and is back in service. And the street light repaired from two hundred and eighteen to five, a wood pole was replaced, arm and power needed. Two other arms are also needed, but out of the budget right now, get it a quote from a vendor. And that concludes that report. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, do you know how long that, uh, Beverly was out or down?
I think it reported it, uh, last week, uh, no, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, I think this went down, so. But it has nothing, it's, well, three is our backup well, so in case, um, well, one and two or either one of them get a hiccup or something happens, that well kicks in automatically and keeps the flow going in the village, so.
You said two weeks?
I said, it's two weeks ago, who did it report it being down?
Also, can you tell me, uh, the, um, leak location, I think they did it on twenty-third, it's for thirty-seven hundred?
Who had it?
It's a leak location service. It's, yeah, leak location service.
You said leak?
Leak, L-E-A-K, leak. It's on page, uh, six.
All right.
I'm just wondering about, it seems like we did that part before, it's thirty-seven, it's back to my, it's coming from.
Leak, a leak?
Leak location service, that's.
Uh, he probably called it out for, for something, uh, I'm pretty sure he would have just, it must have been something, I don't know where actually it was.
What is it? Oh, okay.
That is the location of the existing water main that crosses three ninety-four.
Oh.
It's associated with our nine one.
Okay, so we have.
Yeah, we know that where that main is, it's critical for us to know where to tie it with it.
Okay, economic development director, Joe Wizwata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Marshal has issued permits to gas and wash for the underground storage tanks. These will be the tanks for the gasoline and diesel. Those tanks were installed under the direction of the Fire Marshal in conjunction with the Saw Village Fire Prevention Bureau. Uh, construction continues on the gas and wash project, the ironwork underway as the project is moving full steam. The board has before it tonight, um, for consideration, an intergovernmental agreement between Cook County and Saw Village. This IGA spells out the terms of the invested Cook grant for two thousand and eighteen nineteen. The village received two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, phase one engineering for roadway and rail expansion in the logistics center. Staff recommendation is to approve the resolution. The board also has before it requests for qualifications for phase one engineering study presumed at the two thousand and eighteen nineteen invested Cook grant. There are a few requests, consultants and engineers to provide qualifications for the. There are a few requests, consultants and engineers to provide qualifications for the work to be performed on the Logistics Center. Cook County and village staff have reviewed the RFQ, and a recommendation is to approve the RFQ. The village will begin advertising, um, the RFQ once approved, and will make a final decision subject to the notification to proceed from Cook County. Finally, a police report that we've completed a request for information for a manufacturing company with a secret three hundred thousand square feet, and is considering Saw Village as an operation. The RFI will be delivered this week to their legal team. I want to thank the Saw Village, or excuse me, the, uh, SSMMA, which is South Village Mayor's Managers Association, and CSABC for their assistance in preparing the information necessary for the RFI. We've identified a property suitable for the location within our proposal. Uh, they are hoping to complete construction by their deadline, January of twenty twenty, and look forward to them selecting us as that location. Um, finally, I'd like to congratulate Malcolm White as our chief, the local board, I've never seen, uh, so many grand stars and all my years here, so congratulations.
I have a quick, I have a quick question. George, if you get, um, you know the grant money for seventy-five thousand, you know, if we could put the money out first, did, has many of the money come back in to reimburse us?
The reimbursement request for that order will be sent in December, December third.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like the thirteen, no, it hasn't been, so.
All right, thanks. I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong. According to what you gave us last week, um, CN and Winback will not contribute anything to the rail spurts, to the development of rail spurts. There, there's not a proven impact for CN and Winback to contribute any financial money or that we are getting most of the money out of the grant, the three fifty out of grant and the hundred thousand that we want to get out of bond. So CN and, uh, Winback are not contributing anything?
That's correct. CN Railroad is, uh, not contributing to the Phase One Engineering Study, and Winback, as a, uh, property owner in the Logistics Center, uh, doesn't have any interest in expanding the rail, so they wouldn't contribute.
They, they don't have any interest?
They, they have no interest in expanding the rail service in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in other words, their rail spur, they have two rail spurs that service Winback. Uh, they really don't have any interest in expanding the rail, um, the interest in expanding the rail is to provide other opportunities for businesses to grow, uh, and develop.
Okay, reports of trustees, standing committees, and counties. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernice Brewer.
I have no, uh. Wait, that's my comment, I have to go. I have no public service, uh, report. However, um, what I'm about to say is a little out of the, um, area, but it has everything to do with, um, residents, it has everything to do with, um, a taxpayer hole, so, um, it's my question. Every, um, Tuesday, I ask for reports, and I ask for reports from, um, Robertson Engineering to find out about the infrastructure information that we need in order to do it in the village for. These, this is public information, and I'm not getting it again. So my question is to you, what is the problem and why I can't get information related to public service? Everything that we need is there.
Are you asking me a question? I thought you said, I'm gonna stick my question to you, and you're asking me this question?
Yes.
You, so your comment is ask me a question?
Yes. So the question I'm going to ask you is, why is it that I can't get the information needed in order to make an informed decision? I have asked it because this stuff was made of twenty seventeen. Robertson Engineering has the information. I don't understand why I can't get it. There shouldn't be a problem, this all this stuff is public information, and I should be, should have, this, this is a no-brainer, and, uh. I mean, he was left when I was speaking.
Okay. Who are you talking?
So whoever was left?
I have no idea, man, I'm looking at this page.
Uh-huh. Okay, I said whoever was left.
Okay, so, so what?
Okay, all right, so anyway.
Let's come on, let's, uh, we've been here for a while.
So anyway, you written it?
You never, with, for our trustee, you have, is that, is that your question? Why haven't you got information? Is that your question?
Yes, I mean, what, uh, when I want to get this information, also with the, uh, treasurer's, um, the interim, uh, director, she's, uh, even though I've forwarded the information, she says she has to respond to for you, but a lot of this stuff I have asked through regular, um, channels, you know, writing memos and ask her questions, and I can't seem to get the reports that I need in order to make, um, decisions either. So I want to know what is the problem that she, I can't get information from, um, the Saw, you know, um. It seems like to me they're holding up information that could be useful, uh, when we're making decisions for the village. And, and I can't get the information from the Southern or, um, Robertson Engineering. So can you check and find out when I can get that information, if I'm going to make an informed decision?
That, that was your comment?
Yeah, I meant, I said, and I'm going to respond to it.
Okay, I'm going to respond. Um, as far as, when can you get information, trustee, you asked for a for you. I must have spent close to a grain of paper since you've been trustee asking for different things. You say you're going to get them, you do get them. Do you, do, what do you do with them, I have no idea, but yes, you do get information that you for you, that you ask questions about. I'm still waiting on a report that you were supposed to produce for your committee, you saying you gathered information. I don't know what that is, I have no idea, but I do know that the information that you asked for, you have gotten. You say you haven't got, you even told the, uh, attorney general that you didn't get, until they sent things to you and told you, yes, you did, and here's what it was. So I don't, I don't know what it is that you're actually look, what more you're looking for, but you, 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 you put a for you in every other day, so I'm sure, out of the different for you's that you have, you kind of go through them, you can probably see that you've asked repeatedly the same question or repeatedly the same topic. So you saying that you can't get it, that it's false, and you do get your information. It may not be how you, the answer may not be what you want to hear or whatever, but it is the answer that is the right answer. So to say that you don't get information and you can't make decisions for that, that is not true, you do get information. And we keep copies of every single thing that's sent out to you, and that's been going on since May. So every week you say you're going to get information, and you do get it. It sounds good that you say that you don't get it, but I have proof that you do get it. And we have copies of information that you asked for, that you for you, that you came to the suffered, and anybody else that you asked for. We keep copies because, for this particular reason, because you say you don't get, you don't get, you don't get it. So I've asked, anything that's given out, I need a copy of, and I have copies of all the information that you have received since you started asking for it in May. So I don't, I don't understand that one, but, you know, you keep saying that, are, are we going to go back and forth or?
No, Mr. Mayor, I got to clarify what information I'm talking about. The information I requested from Robertson Engineering is not what I'm getting from the report.
Just for that, trustee, you want to say?
And, uh, no, I'm just responding to you because you didn't explain it, but I didn't know. So the information that I have requested from Robertson Engineering since May, by the, uh, number, the feet of, how many feet of, of pipe have we replaced, repaired, replaced since we've been in office since May? We haven't got that information. We just got the information last week about the number of fire hydrants and water main breaks.
You said you didn't get that. You just got to saying you didn't get information, now you're saying you got it.
I said last week, we just got that information.
But now you're saying you got it.
And, and we just got that information last week, and the information that I need from Robertson Engineering has nothing. It has everything to do with loops, how much loops cost, and things like that. So those are things that we need in order to make an informed decision. And you, and I got the memos from, from you that says that we, you did not give me that information.
Please show that to me that I said.
Okay, I'll, I'll score you a copy tomorrow.
Okay.
You know? So, you know, the, for you to sit up here, yes, they can respond to some for you's, and some for you's I haven't got.
Okay.
Yes, so, yes, I'm saying I'm.
This is, this is not contrary, contrary to what you were reading, trustee.
Contrary to what I know, you not telling the.
Okay, so I'm not going to, like I told you before, I'm not going to argue with you.
Well, I'm.
Anything else, you have anything else on the public service in your comments?
But don't be damn.
You have anything else on the, your public comments?
You let somebody else talk for a change.
I asked you a question, do you have anything else, because, you know, this is not going to go.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to do that. Are you have anything else on the public service and your comments?
I'm, I'm asking, well, can I get the information from Robertson Engineering?
I already told you that you received it, everything you asked for.
Okay, if you, if I got information from Robertson Engineering, I'm just going to give you copies.
Why do you do this every week?
Why do you do it every week?
Do what?
Do what?
I don't ask you a question.
If you got the information, give it to me.
You have it.
Yeah, okay, give it to me, give me a copy of it. Let, let me see it. If you got it, let me see it. It, it'll be simple. And I, I'll say I'm sorry, if you got information from Robertson Engineering, let me see it. I know. Let me get my own information.
Budget and Finance Committee, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Spurs, I just want to say congratulations, and to Chief White. Looking forward to seeing, uh, some of the positive things he does at the home. Uh, secondly, I want to say congratulations to the village and, uh, Interim Director Judy Saffin, because, uh, that's a pretty prestigious award to receive. And if I'm not mistaken, but don't quote me, I think the last time they received it was, I think, two thousand. So it's been quite a while, and I know that, you know, with the budget process, uh, we had, she did make at least two or three revisions, just so we can have like the criteria to get, you know, considered for the award, so, uh, kudos to her. Also, on the, tonight, uh, to be noted on is the acceptable uses policy, uh, for the, uh, for the village. I know that trustee Brewer had a question ask regarding, um, some, uh, some kind of blockage if, uh.
Firewall.
Or she, firewall, that, uh, that would happen if we use our Saw Village email account and try to forward it to, um, like our personal email. And I told her that, uh, we'll kind of work with that, and, uh, we'll kind of work to get that resolved, along with, uh, the use of access for trustees and other, uh, employees when we do the amendment sometime in January, February. Uh, but hopefully we can hold this tonight, because, uh, we don't have it, they're currently in place at the moment, so it'd be good to have something in place. Uh, also, last comment is that next Wednesday, Budget and Finance Committee will meet, uh, seven o'clock, hand to the return. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. In the Housing and Government Relations, trustee Tate. Orders Review Committee, trustee Leonard Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Orders Review Committee will meet on December third, six-thirty, here in the Matunda. Um, and I don't know if I, one of the orders that we have under new business, and I don't know if I should do this when you go under new business, I was asked to have one of them tabled. So did you want me to do that while you were doing the business?
Yes, we didn't ask for that one to be tabled.
Okay. And, um, I was wondering if you will be at the office on Thursday, because there's a couple of things I want to discuss with you.
Yes, I'll be, I have a meeting in the morning, so I'll be, I should be back from lumber in about twelve, so I should be back by twelve.
Okay, because I, I need to see you on a couple of things.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll give you any of them.
Okay.
Okay, now that is my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Bez LuPine.
Uh, given that we've got a new police chief tonight, I think that means I'm probably not going to have a public safety meeting in December, uh, as I think I needed your new chief a chance to assess what he has with, uh, the, the current state of the police department. I know he's got a sixty and a ninety day plan that he wants to execute, so I think I need to give him a chance to get a jumpstart on that before I start to pester him about my wants with the Public Safety Committee. Um, although, don't worry, he's going to hear it from me and, and know, because I'll be like a little bird on the shoulder of bugging him nonetheless, uh, because I'm good at that. Um, changing over my comments, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for yesterday's Veterans Day event. Um, for those of you who were not here, um, A, I want to say, um, thank you trustee Carter, you were an awesome MC and, and master ceremonies for the event. Um, and then secondly, uh, how impressed I was too with Mr. Farrell. We had a World War II veteran with us yesterday who is ninety years young.
How old is Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Farrell, yeah, that, I got to sit across from him at the lunch yesterday, and just, man, I could just sit and talk to him all day, he's got so many stories to tell and experiences to share. He's just a wealth of information, so I really enjoyed myself and, and had a great time yesterday. So, um, was really pleased with that event, and wish we had more veterans and residents here to participate. So that ends my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next one, I'm going to have to give this heading down to you, trustee Todd, as far as community outreach, so we can get the proper, um, information and, and have the committee be named properly through its ordinance, so I will get that to you. But it, right now, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Mayor, this time I have no comments.
Thank you. Reports of Committee Commissions, Senior Advisory Committee, uh, Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and trustees. Uh, next meeting for our Senior Advisory Council is this Thursday, the fifteenth. Sorry, I don't have the time on there, but it's five o'clock and all is welcome. Also, Medicare sales meetings have started, the Senior Center on Monday, October fifteenth, will run through December seventh, uh, for annual enrollment period, every Monday at ten-thirty and every Wednesday at twelve-thirty, uh, PM, except November twenty-first, which is big for Thanksgiving. Flyers will host it all dates and times around the Village Hall and the Senior Center. Please let all your seniors, twenty-sixty-five, whether, uh, they're that or sixty-five, all be there, no questions. Thank you. Uh, game night, of course, is every first and third Friday. Please go out and invite the seniors from Big Boys and other gangs. We had a huge crowd last, uh, Friday, and, uh, they really, really had a good time. So we actually start at six o'clock and go to, uh, teaming, so invite the seniors out, you know, we're getting a lot of participation with that. Also, our first senior luncheon will be held this Friday, uh, November sixteenth, and that actually starts at eleven o'clock, and all our seniors are invited, fifty and over. Lunch will be sponsored by Eastern Stars, and we're going to have, uh, Thanksgiving Day with the, uh, future. We do have flyers hosted around the village, so hopefully all of you will be joining us, uh, for our luncheon. Uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. New business. I relayed set a motion to approve their council payment as first of November thirteenth, uh, two thousand eighteen. The amount is four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Sir, did you have a comment?
It was moved, it was moved by trustee, um, called a second by trustee Zupan. Question?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't agree with item ten B. Uh, I would like the, um.
Who?
With item ten B, I would like.
Where, where you got the motion right now?
You asked for a comment, did you?
No, I asked for a comment on motion A, on the, on the council table. Any other questions on the, uh, council table? At a club, please call her on. At a club, please call the row.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I suppose I need a comment.
I asked you, you said something about 10B, we haven't gotten 10B.
It ain't 10A.
You said 10B.
10A.
Okay. There's a motion up there, she has a question to that, is that question related to that motion?
10A.
What's the, what's the question?
She keeps saying this.
I'm asking you.
Senior advisory council. 10A, my, my, this motion to, uh, council table is 10A.
No. Okay, what's the question to the council table?
I don't agree to, uh, 10A, I want to have that separated from the rest of the council payable, uh, agenda.
I don't understand, I don't understand your question, what do you mean you don't agree to 10A? 10A is against the council table?
Well, I want to separate the amount of, uh, from, uh, council payable for Dr. Strader, the six invoices, and also, um, anything for LAPD. And also the salaries for, um, to the southern. None of these things have been brought to, uh, none of these items have been brought to the board for approval.
You just bring, bring them up to the board now for approval?
None of the individuals have been brought to the board for approval.
What, what approval are you talking about?
The approval for Miss Sutton.
Mr. Sir, I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand what you're talking about.
The LAPD group hasn't been brought before the board for approval.
Approval of, approval of what?
But the LAPD.
What are you talking about?
LAPD was not brought before the board for approval.
Approval of what?
For to be the attorneys.
They are, they are one of our attorneys, yes, they were.
They were not brought before the board. And they were not brought before the board for Miss Sutton. And as far as I have issues with, uh, Dr. Strader, because then we still not clear on how much she should be paid these costs.
For those of you, you're asking, you're asking those things to be excluded. Is there anybody else?
They're voted on separately.
Is anybody else, is there, is there any other questions on that?
I like to put it in the.
Is there any other question, does anybody else have any other, um, question on that particular item that she's asking for to be removed?
That's great.
Okay, we'll go with the original motion. Madam Clerk, please call the row for the council table.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion to approve a serves agreement with, um, SOX, which is Simplified Online Communication System. I have a motion. Moved by trustee Carter, um, yes, and, and second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Yes. Trustee Todd?
Yes. Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have seen motion to approve an ordinance amending Article 6, the alarms of Chapter 22, emergency management and services of the municipal code of the village of Sauk Village. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an order as amending section 14-24, property maintenance code adopted of the, adopted of Division 1 Journal of Article 1 Building and Technical Codes of Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Municipal Code of the Village of Sauk Village. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can we table this?
This is the one that you wanted to table?
Yes, we want to table, I, I want to table it to a later date.
Does anybody else have a problem with table? You have a problem?
No.
Okay. You have a table? Item number E, motion to approve the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the county of Cook and village of Sauk Village for the 2018 investment Cook grant.
So moved.
Was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. A motion to approve the documented criteria for the request for qualifications for a Phase One engineering study pursuant to the 2018 investment Cook grant. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Sauk Village acceptable usage, acceptable usage policy.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Um, the last thing I did, I did, and I, I thank trustee Todd, I mean, sorry, trustee, um, Zupan for mentioning the Veterans Day, I just want to thank, uh, everyone, put it on record that, um, I appreciate that, um, State Senator LG Fels was here, um, along with the other people that spoke. And, um, I appreciate all the veterans that came out, they had like 25 veterans that came out. And, um, I'm just glad we were able to, uh, to do this. And also, I just wanted to put on the record that the food was donated privately, I'm sorry, paid for through private funds. It was not paid for, anything from the village, it was paid for, paid for through private funds. So I would like to thank the people that made that house. That being said, I'll, to make, I'll accept the motion for adjournment. Moved by, moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Zupan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Motion carried. Thank you.
Hey, who are you? Oh, you did a good job.
I did a good job.
Yes, and most people I've seen here at one time. Nonsense. Always nonsense.